Five, three, two.
You're live, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening all. Welcome to a Thursday, January 21st, 2021, 6:00 PM meeting, a remote participation meeting of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. Before we get started this evening, I have some administrative responsibilities to handle. I'm going to try to move them as quickly as possible, so please be patient with me for a minute and we'll get started as soon as we can. So if anyone who is having difficulty lying on, you're going to hear this several times throughout my little speech, but if you want to call 1-646-749-3112, enter the remote access code of 944-571-349, or you can log on to your computer. The website is GoLocal, GoToGlobal, excuse me, globalgotomeeting.com, and join with 944-571-349. So with that being said, I'm going to read my script very quickly. As a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Cato. I'm the chair of the Auburn zoning board of appeals. In an effort to reduce background noise, I'm going to have to make sure you all have your phones muted, any type of music or television in the background if you're at home. If you get kind of quiet, all that stuff in the background is very helpful. And only unmute if you're going to speak. Please thoroughly confirm that all the members of the boards and persons anticipated on the agenda are present, and if you can hear me, please sound off affirmatively. So when I call your name, please respond. Vice Chair Matt. I'm here, Mr. Chairman. Excellent, thank you. Mr. Giacolo.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Well, and I hope you are also, and everybody else.
Mr. Cuffey.
I'm here, Bob.
Megan Roach.
I'm for it, but ask.
I know Peter Jones had mentioned this, we've given an email, so you're all aware. Just sent, just asking that if he could be deferred this evening due to a heavy workload. So if we do happen to meet him, he is accessible, but is not going to opt to participate this evening. And we have Caitlin Bush.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you and welcome. So town officials, if you are in fact here, when I call your name, please answer the affirmative. Building Commissioner Caleb Moody.
Here.
Land use clerk Ginger Buto.
Here.
Okay. Do we have anyone else that I may have missed on my script that might want to identify themselves before I move forward on the town side?
I think we're good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I think I'm fine. Excellent, thank you. So good evening. This open meeting of the town of Auburn, Massachusetts, zoning board of appeals for Thursday, January 21st, 2021, now called the order at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth through the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, as to suck the governor's order to suspend the requirement of the public open meeting law, to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, to which you can find posted with the agenda materials from this meeting on the town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. To this meeting, the zoning board of appeals convened by remote participation for the public only. Although some staff may be physically located in a select meeting room at town hall, those employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting again, I mentioned this earlier, but please, if you've missed it, call 1-646-749-3112 and enter access code 944-571-349. Or you can join by a computer by going to GoToMeeting, join 944-571-349. The remote access information has also been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn cable television network. Accordingly, those members of the zoning board of appeals, employees and members of the public to participate, please be aware that folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Meeting materials, all supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. Okay, so we're now going to turn over to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, remember to go with the ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. Sorry, I'm going to give a drink there. Now, I, Robert Cato, will introduce each speaker on the agenda, after they conclude their remarks, then I'll go around and ask each member, invite them to add comments or have questions. So when we do that, if you can identify yourself as which member you are, have your comments, and then you can go ahead and mute your mic again. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. As members wish to encourage, engage in discussion with other members. Please do so through the chair. Take care of identifying yourself. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public commenters for us. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak, identify themselves, so you give us your name and your address only. Once the chair has a list of all public commenters, I will call each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken with the meeting will be conducted by a roll call. Vote. Technical difficulties if we happen to have any, we will suspend the meeting while attempts to repair are made and keep accurate minutes, building any disconnections and reconnections of the members. Whew, okay, so I got that far. Do I have a, I'm going to close that out, sorry. So do I have a motion to open the meeting?
The chairman, Michael Matt, vice chair, motion to open the meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Giacolo, second.
Thank you, Mr. Giacolo, Mr. Cuffey. Just for a quick roll call, that way you know the mics are working as well.
Yeah, open.
Thank you. Ms. Roach.
Open.
Mr. Marinardi's made a motion. Peter Jones is not here. Ms. Bush?
Yes, open.
Great, thank you so much. So we have a pretty easy, or at least short, agenda. It appears as though we do have some discussions down the road, but we'll get right to this fourth one. So the 6:00 PM applicant, Serrato signs LLC requesting a special permit under section 7.8 of the Auburn zoning bylaw, so a record 25 foot high by 15 foot 4 inch wide free standing pylon style sign, probably located at 117 Washington Street, Auburn map, map 27, Paco 8. Is the applicant present?
Yes, this is Andy from Serrato signs.
Great, thank you so much. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
The chairman, motion to open the hearing.
Giacolo, second.
Thank you, Mr. Giacolo. So we're going to assume that everybody, we have a motion to open. We're going to continue. So, Mr. Serrato, sir, if you could just explain, obviously everybody has a copy of your application. We have all the same literature. So if you wanted to kind of go over what you have going on there, sir, and just kind of give the board a brief, and then I'll open up further the discussion and we'll talk if we have any advice.
Through the chair.
So.
Excuse me. Through the chair, just point of clarification, we need to take a vote on the motion to open.
All right, I was trying to, I was trying to move forward. You're right. I think, I apologize. So, okay, so we have a first and a second. So do we have a, Mr. Cuffey, how do you vote?
Open.
Thank you. Ms. Roach?
Open.
Thank you. And I vote to open. So we're good to go. Okay.
Thank you.
So I apologize. That's okay. I apologize. I tried to move things along and I should have just procedurally followed that. So again, I apologize for interrupting. Mr. Serrato, if you want to go ahead and start over, sir?
No, that's fine. Thank you, folks. Two months back, I was in for the same sign, same location, and the sign was approved, but was square footage in the height and leaf. What had happened, the information given to me by the landlord showing the planning board approval, the drawings he gave me, actually showed the sign outside of the property line closer to the road. Impression he had that for the planning board, he thought it was okay to put in that area. When I started taking my measurements of how the sign would sit and where the property line actually was, I found, I found and explained to him, and he found out as well as the property line was further back than what he understood. So the area you have to work with to install that sign with the drainage along the wall, I don't have enough room to put the sign. So what I'm looking for is relief of the setback to the property line from 10 feet to 2 feet. And if you scroll back up a little bit, I can probably try to explain it a little bit better to you. I apologize. But that heavy black line, the line that curves, is like a half moon and line looks straight across. The line that goes straight all the way across is the own property line. So from that line towards the road is another 20 feet. So from his property line to the road is 20 feet, and he just doesn't have the room to fit between the wall and his property line. So it's a relief to get closer to the property line.
Okay. Is there something else to add, sir? I'm going to go ahead and yield the floor to Vice Chair, Mr. Marin. Sir, do you have any questions in concern to the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and I was hoping to try to figure this out quickly myself, but so where in your, in your now proposal, based on the setback that you're requesting, are thoughts will this sign be in proximity to the street? You'll still be 20 feet away from the street. Okay, so that's, okay, so we're not encroaching any further toward the street. It's just the relief on, on the property line setback that you're requesting.
Yes, sir. And I believe in your, in that paperwork, I did superimpose the sign as best I could to show you how it would sit.
Okay, yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's a smart photo. It makes sense. I just wanted to litigiously take a look at the numbers, and I couldn't find that. But I do see it here on the, on the 20 feet. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to reserve any additional questions, but I don't have anything for right now.
Excellent, thank you so much. Mr. Giacolo.
I'm back here, Mr. Chairman. To the applicant, is this the only place you can put that sign?
Yes, as you start coming back towards Auburn, the road gets, the property line gets narrow. So it's actually, as you're facing the property to the right hand side, it's about 12 feet to the, to the, to the wall. And as you go over to the far left, it comes out to be about 18 feet off the wall. And again, because of the retaining wall that was installed and the drainage pipe that's put in along the wall, there isn't a safe place to put the foundation. As you see, I'm just, as you see in that picture, the pole is actually sitting right outside the stone. And I'm afraid to go closer, but by, by code, I believe, to go closer to those overhead power lines, I have to be 10, 15 feet away from that as well, I believe, per electrical code. So we felt a sad death right in the middle there.
I don't mind in telling you that I feel we're being forced into making a decision here because everybody didn't do their due diligence. With that comment, I've got a question for Caleb. In that, if this is, if the relief is granted, because we're doing what we're doing with the property line, are we more inclined to be issuing a variance instead of a special permit?
To answer that question, the bylaw says that sign regulations can be waived per the special permit. That being said, I think the sign would constitute a structure under our bylaw's definition, and it may require a variance to decrease the setback.
Are you, what would be your opinion on how we should proceed? Permit, special permit, or variance?
I'm, I'm inclined to say that it would require a variance rather than a special permit.
Well, the paperwork would have to be amended to show that, but if we were to speak in terms of a variance, I guess, for me, if we made a stretch that because of the existing work and site work that was done, that we have a problem with topology that exists now. So my feeling is that if we're going to go over the variance and the fact that, I would loosely say the topology requirement would be met, I'm feeling that that's all we could do to grant some relief here. And that, is that the only, Mr. Serrato, is that the only style sign that, that you could put in to require the reasign?
Yes.
I'm going to reserve any further comment until I hear everybody. Okay, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for bringing that up too. I want to have the seat drill. Yes, sir. Okay, Mr. Cuffey, sir, do you have any questions in concern to the applicant?
I'm okay for now. I'm okay because we have the 20 feet from the road. So I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Roach?
Um, you know, I would agree with Mr. Cuffey that, you know, because we have the extra room, room on the road, I'm, you know, I'm not super concerned, but I guess, a question for the applicant, you know, what about the possibility, and obviously if it's not feasible, I'm, I'm happy to be told that it's, you know, not a possibility, but what about the sign, you know, being actually, you know, up, up above the retaining wall? Obviously, you'd lose one or two parking spots because the sign would have to be, you know, into the concrete and, you know, raised up because it would be up above the retaining wall. But what about the possibility of, you know, putting it up a little more? Do you feel like that wouldn't give you, you know, as much view from the road? You know, I just want to know, would there be an option to move it up there?
I don't believe that there'd be a fair place for them to put a sign, they would put the edge of the sign 40 plus feet away from the edge of the road and the traffic going downward, you can see it.
Okay. Okay, just, I mean, I thought that might be the answer, but I just, you know, wanted to at least throw out the suggestion. Okay, I would say I'm also all set with questions for now, then.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bush, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I don't have anything right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the only thing I'd like to add, well, a couple of things, to the applicant, Mr. Serrato. So the relief for the 2 feet to the property line is strictly because of the, I think, what we discovered where the property line was, so to speak. So in other words, the location of the sign from the original application has not changed, correct?
I'm sorry, can you ask that question again?
So the original location of the sign, before you were seeking this relief, the original location of the sign has not changed, correct?
I would answer that as, as yes.
It has, the location of the sign has changed and you put it back?
I'm sorry. On the plot plan that was approved by the planning board, it actually showed the sign in front of that dark black line that I showed you.
Right, okay.
And so to answer your question, that, if that plan was given to you originally, I showed it on state property, which doesn't belong, but it was 10 feet from the roadway.
Mm-hmm.
Not, not, if that makes any sense. So I was, when I saw the drawing and talking with the owner, the impression we had was they had, they owned the property all the way up to the road because of what the planning board approved of where the sign could go. And when I actually got out there to get all my measurements and tapes, I wanted clarification from him before I started digging any holes and doing what I have to do. And then he went and got the plans and asked some more questions and found out that the property line was back further than what he was, he thought it was.
Um, okay, so if I may add, I believe the owner felt that since the planning board approved it on the drawing they had, that it wasn't an issue for him to sign it. It wasn't until I was going to get the permit that I was, what I always do, request it's 10 foot setback question, and then I started to ask the questions about the property line. Okay, whereabouts in front here is the property line? You know, how far from the road before it starts? And that's when he found out it was a lot further back than what he, he thought. Right. So to be clear here, you discovered the error and you have brought this error to, before the board, for, for, can you correct me, is that right?
Yes.
Right. So you, you discovered the mistake, you brought it to the owner of the property, they acted in good faith and they brought this before the board. Otherwise, you probably could have installed the sign and nobody would have probably known, right?
That's correct. I could have put it where it was on the, as I have, if I presented it, if I presented the site plan that was approved by the planning board, if I presented that to the building inspector and showed that, and showed it 10 feet back from the road, thinking that was the property line, that's sort of the direction I was going to go.
Right. And I appreciate that. The reason I ask that question is, is more for the understanding of the board, that, you know, we've had other sign locations on Route 20 that exist that never pulled permits, never requested anything, you know, and it was something that happened many, many, many years ago before the concrete gym is in. That's not what I'm saying, but I'm just pointing out that I think that acting in good faith, we should make an effort to try to correct the situation and help it move forward is all my, my thought here is. So with that being said, do we have any abutters present that would like to speak to this? All right, I'll ask this one more time. Any abutters, just in case they have any technical difficulties? Okay, so five, four, three, two, one, hearing none, seeing none. So with the gathered information, Vice Chair Marin, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'd like to adjust, and just dovetail off of a question that you asked, that, I'm not suggesting it wasn't answered, but I, I need clarity. So for the applicant, the original plans that were submitted succinctly, did those plans indicate a 10 foot from the road sign?
When I, when I went for the variance for this sign, if the question was asked, if I planned on going closer to the property line. So to answer your question, I planned on going 10 feet from the, from the road, which I thought was the property line, which was on the original site plan. And there was a question also asked at that last meeting, if I planned on going closer to the property line, but I didn't, there wasn't a need to from the plans that I had.
Okay, understood. And, and what the chairman had asked is if, if, you know, based on the modification of the, the location. So when this is before us previously for the sign, and I apologize that I don't have those notes in front of me, but did we approve a 10 foot from the road sign? Is that correct?
Well, was approved, the last one was relief of height and relief of size.
Right. Well, what was the intended distance from the road for that, that sign?
At that time was per, per, per 10 feet.
Okay. So, so we've gone from an approval from 10 feet from the road to 20 feet, is that correct?
Actually, it'll be about 22 feet from the road.
Okay.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Marin, I don't want to.
Do you have a floor?
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt, Mr. Marin. I just want to read a couple of things that, I'm kind of taking back my original statement. So the bylaw says location of structure, and it starts with unless otherwise specified in this bylaw, no structure shall be located within the required yard area. So, and then you go to the sign bylaw, and it says no sign shall be located any part closer than 10 feet from the traveled roadway. So I would change my opinion that this would not be a variance but a special permit because the bylaw states in another section that signs is, can be located as long as they're at least 10 feet from the traveled roadway. It does say, or, it does say or side or rear, rear lot lines. It does not say front lot line.
Could I, could I make, could I ask, make a comment? So if it's, if it's a roadway and not the property line, I'm okay putting that sign there even without a variance or special permit, if I'm hearing you correctly, sir?
That is, that is how I, that's how I interpret that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
After hearing Caleb read what he just read, I would, even though I mentioned earlier that we'd be looking at a, at a variance, okay, I can understand now what Caleb is saying. I think the petitioner is well within his rights then, if that's what we're talking about, okay, for the, for the quote, lot property line, as in his, as in his paperwork. If that's what we're talking about, then I think the petitioner is well within his rights to put the sign right there.
Could I make another comment? What's kind of interesting, now that you said this, maybe that's why whoever did the site plan put the sign where they did, because it was 10 feet from the roadway, but it's on state property, so I can't put it there. I have to move it back. And that's when I thought there was a property line, not the roadway, so.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and so in follow-up, and I think your thoughtful comment earlier, the applicant is certainly in good faith, trying to do the right thing and litigiously looking at the numbers. Based on what building commissioner had suggested, and his interpretation of the bylaw, what's before us, and then beyond that fact, the fact that the original application saw 10 feet from the roadway, we are clearly beyond that now, 20 to 22, I think, is suggested from the roadway. If a special permit is not required here, then I would, I would make the humble suggestion that this application may not be necessary and that we consider a return of fees.
Okay. Did you complete your thought, Mr. Marin, or did we lose you? I'm not really sure. It just kind of abruptly stopped.
Apparently my mic went ahead and muted me, so I won't, I won't drag you through my final comments, other than to suggest that I'm leaning towards the suggestion from the building commissioner that this application may not require variance or special permit, and that I would ask for the board's consideration that if this applicant is drawn, do we consider returning fees?
I appreciate that, sir. So let me go around the board, and then we can talk a little bit about it. I just want to make sure everybody has, is equally up to the conversation where we are at this point. So, Mr. Cuffey, I'm going to yield the floor to you, sir. I think you probably understand what's going on. Do you have any thoughts or want to add anything?
No, I, I feel the sign is okay, you know, like I said before, as long as we're 20 feet from the road, I'm okay.
Right. Okay, Ms. Roach?
No, I, I agree. I think that if the language in the bylaw is road and not property line, then I would agree with Caleb's assessment that maybe the special permit actually is not needed. But I'm fine with the location of the sign.
Okay. Ms. Bush?
Um, I agree with what everyone's saying. I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the reason, I just want to be clear, but just so you know, that Ms. Bush is the authent this evening. She won't be necessarily voting on anything, but I feel as though it's a valuable opportunity for her to just be trained and get involved in the conversation and, you know, keep her, keep people engaged. So, you know, honestly, I agree with everything that's ever been said already here this evening. I think we, here's the thing, and I can tell you from experience on the board, and I think many other members will agree with me, that our sign bylaw is back, wide, and complex. It is very easy to misinterpret or not understand, especially with all the highways, different roads, you know, between Route 20, 146, 290, you know, we don't have to talk about that. So it's difficult to interpret and make sure you nail down the right thing. So first of all, for the applicant, I appreciate the fact that you came forward, sought clarification, but I also defer to the expertise of the members of the board and Caleb that, yeah, I think we have an exercise in review. We can take it from there, but I don't, I, I think he's in good standing based on what is going on here, you know?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I, I just want to make sure that the applicant. I, I just want to make sure that the applicant's aware that although it's, it's twenty feet from the traveled roadway today, um, if the state decided to widen that roadway and in, and increase that, it could be as little as two feet from the traveled roadway. So, if at some point, at some point it caused a site distance problem, then the state may make them remove it.
And, you know, that's actually good to note, I do appreciate you bringing that up too, um, just really for the applicant and all members of the board. As you know, a couple of years ago, the state had mentioned that the Route 20 corridor from basically Shute Street to probably somewhere around Chalpin is one of the big central Massachusetts economic development opportunities that they see. So, as you can tell, the activity on Route 20 ever increasing, uh, that we're gonna probably see a widening of some of these lanes, especially when we talk about something else in a few minutes unrelated to the hearing. So, with that being said, I, I appreciate you making that publicly known, Caleb, and also on the record, so, thank you. Um, I mean, I think we've discussed this enough, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Maron, do I have a second?
Through, through the chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. My, my recommendation would be that the applicant make a request to withdraw the application without prejudice prior to...
Okay, I just didn't know if we discussed it further, I was gonna follow that, you know, what we usually do, but I, I have no problem with that. Uh, I just want to give the board the opportunity to do it.
It's completely up to the applicant, I just think that would, if, if it sounds like it's gonna go the way that it sounds, I would recommend a withdrawal.
And I would, um, so that we give the applicant an opportunity to be heard.
Right, I was gonna say, so let me suspend the motion then temporarily, and, uh, Mr. Serrato, do you have a request of us now, sir, after hearing all this information?
Uh, yes, I would like to withdraw the application without prejudice.
Excellent, thank you so much. So, I have a motion on the floor from the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, and I also have a, um, a, a condition submitted by the Vice Chair to refund any fees associated with this particular section of the application overall. So, with that being said, do I have a motion on, um, the current situation under the six clock hearing?
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I would do those in two separate votes, sorry, I don't mean to make it any longer than it has to be, but just for...
No, that's okay, all right, so we can take it as an A and a B. I read what was there, uh, that apparently is on the floor, so the first motion would be if we accept the applicant's request to withdraw, do I have a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal without prejudice.
Excellent, thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Chikolo, Mr. Cussey?
Yep, I approve that.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Roach?
I approve.
Excellent, thank you, and the chair, I also approve. And part B of the request would be, uh, submitted earlier by Mr. Vice Chair Maron, uh, to, to refund any fees associated with this application, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make that motion as stated, to refund any fees collected for this application.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chikolo, do I have, Mr. Cussey?
I approve that.
Thank you very much, Ms. Roach?
I also approve.
And, uh, I also approve by Chair Takeoff, thank you. So, um, you're all set, Mr. Serrato, thank you very much for bringing this back to the board. Uh, I'm sorry it didn't take, it took a while, it did to figure it out, but I'm glad it's clear, and, um, you know, good luck with everything down there, and we appreciate you coming forward with this.
Once again, thank you, it's last time I've been in front of your board, a couple times, I always appreciate your professionalism, and, uh, appreciate the way the building inspector handled this and found the information on it. Thank you very much.
Motion to close the hearing. Motion to close the hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Maron here with a second, Mr. Cussey?
Close.
Uh, Ms. Roach?
Go ahead.
Excellent, okay, so, um, a couple of little business articles that we have here is, um, the first one is Henshaw Street, application for an extension of a special permit, I recite that, so, I won't read the entire letter, but we have a chair, a letter here from Pro-Tech Energy Solutions, um, signed by the Vice President, and it has the engineering development, basically stating that, um, you know, due to COVID, the situation with the studies to national electric, they want to take much extension on the permit. Um, the letter itself can be on file if anybody wants to read it, it's available, all of our members have a copy of it, and it really just has to do with the unforeseen delays around, um, Pro-Tech team and National Grid giving a deep, uh, eighteen-month scale-up study. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to extend...
Through the chair.
...permit for, go ahead, sir.
The applicant is present, I don't know if they want to be heard.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't realize, um, I thought this was gonna be, uh, um, just something to divulge. No, I apologize, the applicant's here, but if you could, if you could, man, tell us who you are.
Yes, sir, Adam Christie with Pro-Tech Energy, I'm the one that wrote the request letter. Caleb, thank you for mentioning that I'm here. Uh, the one thing that I would like to speak on, if I may, um, to Chairman, is although I am requesting a six-month extension in the letter, we have received additional information from National Grid a few weeks ago, and essentially, we got dragged into another six-month, more detailed study, and it just started. So, this six-month extension would bring us to when they hope to complete the study, and as we've seen in the last eighteen months with National Grid on almost every solar project in Massachusetts, they haven't hit one single deadline that they said that they would. Even if they were to conclude this in six months, it's gonna take them a couple months to finish our system impact study and issue us an interconnect service agreement. So, if I may, uh, if the board allows, I would respectfully like to request a twelve-month extension, uh, on the special permit because of the new information that we received.
Okay, um...
Through the chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Caleb.
I believe the planning board has recently issued a twelve-month extension on the site plan as well, but the applicant could speak more to that.
Uh, yes, sir, thank you for bringing that up. The planning board, the site plan approval expires in March of this year, and it was subsequently extended twelve months. Um, so, it would be beneficial to us if it could be concurrent twelve-month extensions, uh, if fees on the board were off.
Right, okay, no, I'm glad you brought that information up, thank you very much, Building Commissioner. So, uh, those types of things, um, knowing what the other board's opinions and, and what they've moved on, things really helpful. I know for my confidence, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the other board members as well. Uh, Vice Chair Maron, your thoughts, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and so, um, I appreciate the information brought forward, and, um, I did read the brief, um, by Mr. Christie that was provided. Um, so, I have no concerns, and I, I would, um, I would ask the board to consider a twelve month aligned with the planning board's, uh, timeframe. Uh, I think it, um, was, uh, great that the applicant is here to be able to discuss not only that piece, but, um, the ongoing, um, anticipated timeline, uh, that, uh, he's having to work through. So, I have no, I have no concerns with the proposal, um, and I would, um, I would consider amending the application on the fly here to, uh, to extend it to the twelve-month timeframe.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Chikolo?
I am fine with that also.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Cussey?
Yep, I'm good with the twelve months.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
Also, all set, yep.
Thank you, Ms. Bush?
Yes, I'm good with the twelve months.
Right, okay, I agree, um, so, yeah, there's no origin here, I can see the, working towards trying to resolve these issues, and we have other, uh, you know, priorities and interests, especially with all the crazy things that are going on around here right now, we certainly have to work on our, um, the people that are interested in our community as well, so, um, Caleb, do we have to make a formal vote, motion on this, or is this a, uh, an informal because it's really not a hearing?
Through the chair, although it doesn't need to be advertised, we would need a formal motion and a vote on the request.
Okay, I just want to be clear because it wasn't a formal open and closed hearing type thing. So, with that being said, do I have a motion to extend the requested application of six months to an actual year in alignment with the planning board, uh, for the request of the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion as stated, um, and, um, uh, through the, um, through the Building Commissioner, I don't know if we would need to, um, put language in the, uh, decision that speaks to, um, either amending the application or, uh, making a subject to a condition, but certainly aligning with the twelve-month extension.
Through the chair, the motion, the motion would just need to be a twelve-month extension from the original expiration date of the original decision.
Thank you, so, Mr. Chairman, I would, I would make the motion as stated by the Building Commissioner.
And I agree, thank you so much, do I have a second on that?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Cussey? Thank you, Ms. Roach?
Also approve.
Thank you, and the chair approves. So, good luck, I hope it works out for you, uh, please keep us posted, uh, if there are any other types of, uh, breakthroughs or developments that take place in the project.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, everyone, for your time, uh, I hope you all stay safe. You as well.
Okay, so...
Motion to close the hearing.
Uh, so, yeah, it wasn't, but, yeah, do I have a motion to close the hearing? It wasn't really, no, go ahead, okay.
Second, Mr. Chairman, but I don't know that we actually opened a hearing for that.
Yeah, so, it was, this is on to other business, so, we were kinda in the gray area between, I thought we just took a formal vote, but anyway, we'll go around the one, uh, just to make sure, do I have any other, no more comments on the one Henshaw Street? So, uh, do I have a motion to close that part of the discussion?
Motion to close.
And Q, do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cussey?
Yep, close.
Ms. Roach?
Yep, heard.
Thank you, and the chair closes, okay. Uh, so, we have a letter of intent to sell, and I am going to spend a lot of time with Caleb on this one, not a lot, but a couple minutes anyway, just to make sure we all understand what's going on. We have a Chapter 61 land, 50 Washington Street property summary that we all received in our package here, dated January 6th, 2021, uh, describing how 50 Washington Street is a 30.5 acre parcel, zone industrial park, identified in the 2019 map plan and 2017 Economic Development Strategic Plan as a parcel for potential development. See map five below, the abutting parcel, 190 Washington Street, sometimes known as Adonis Property, which you probably are all familiar with, at one time or another, it's, it's been before the board, um, was recently purchased by Eastland Partners and is long identified as a parcel for development. Buildable areas like limited for several reasons, um, are likely limited, excuse me, for several reasons, broadest family of the land, the parsonage, the grade of the parcel, but also proving the complex for development, but also seems to be some encroachment as shown in map one below by the abutting Lindbrook Apertis Mobile Home Park. A survey would most likely be necessary to determine to any extent an encroachment, as you can see, uh, with the, um, attachments, uh, they give you a basic overview of what they're talking about. But, so, what I want to do is just to make sure that everybody at home understands what we're talking about, or at least on the record, and then I want to defer over to, um, the Building Commissioner to give us an overview of the intent of this letter, if you could, sir.
Sure, so, this is, this is just a notification to keep board members in the loop as to what's going on. 61A land, um, the town has right of first refusal, so certain boards are required to be notified and take a vote. ZBA isn't one of those boards, but I just wanted to inform everybody of what was going on. Um, all town departments and committees have looked at this and do not see any need for this property due to the location on Route 20 and the complexity of developing the wetlands on the property. Um, I can say that the Open Space Committee and the Planning Board both voted to, um, not take action on the right of first refusal, and the board's selectmen will be taking a vote on Monday. Um, I do know that there have been talks with the developer about possibly donating some of the backland, which abuts the walking trails at Pappas, so I think it's, it should be a good thing. Um, like I said, it's a really tough parcel to develop, and none of the town departments felt that it was worth the cost of developing this parcel with the location. Happy to answer any questions.
So, I, right, so I did want to add to the members of the board, too, if you recall here, the, um, 190 Washington Street, Washington Street parcel, also meant as Adonis College property, that was, um, had been auctioned off in the last year or two, and the issue there is it's about forty to sixty foot below Route 20 grade that really ends in a bowl of wetlands, pretty much. So, the land, as Caleb has mentioned, is very, very challenging to develop, even for somebody that would invest that much money in the, the, um, managing all of that water, and what they would allow to do would be a super challenging investment. So, I think that's the point, that if they have an interest in donating some of the land, then maybe making some of the other usable some other way. Um, but again, so, this is just informative for us, and correct, Caleb, because we're not really involved in this, it's DB?
That's correct, the ZBA is not required to take a vote on this, um, I just wanted to inform you of it. Um, I think the developer's intent is this parcel will make, make accessing 190 Washington much easier. Um, that's not to say that they won't develop part of this parcel, but I think their, their main goal is to use it to access the other parcel.
Right, and that was one of the other things they talked about, was, um, you know, not being able to petition the state to open up that side of Route 20. Uh, as you know, the state has an enormous amount of restrictions and is incredibly restrictive to give anybody a, um, you know, a curb cut basically on a highway like Route 20, it's, it's nearly impossible these days. So, again, the addition of this property is to make the abutting property look more attractive to a developer too, so, uh, anyway, so, I, I'd want the board to be aware of that, I appreciate that, Caleb, thank you so much for including that. Uh, I think really that's it, we have to accept the minutes of the meeting from, um, those, what, in December, are we accepting those, or not ready yet?
Through the chair, we don't have any minutes for acceptance tonight.
Excellent, okay, that's fine, and we have, our next meeting is February 18th, 2021. Uh, I don't anticipate the, um, type of delivery changing between now and then, so, it'll be a remote hearing again, um, and everything will be accessible as it has been all along. So, with that being said, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
Excellent, thank you, Vice Chair, do I have a second?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, um, Mr. Cussey?
Yep, close.
Thank you, Ms. Roach?
Yep, adjourned.
Thank you, and, uh, chair adjourned, so, good luck, stay safe, everyone, and we'll talk to you soon. Thank you. Thank you, thanks, Bob.